The system that we're looking at does not require x-ray. But if you've gone down to the state fair or you've gone to some of the other bigger events, it's a system called E-mold that will capture pretty much every weapon system along with knives. The cost of it is roughly about the same price, maybe just a little bit more expensive as if you bought a magnetometer and an x-ray machine.
So if we do like half a hundred and twenty this year, nine hundred and twenty next year, that would should be able to get us?
I mean, we could, yeah, we could phase it in.
Okay, and that still leaves us.
Because I hate.
Seventy some thousand.
The hard part is not knowing the two part timers, what they're gonna do in the future with courthouse security. It's great to have all the technology, but not have the manpower to support the technology. So it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to, and it's hard to discuss because you without getting into vulnerabilities and I can't discuss vulnerabilities in a public meeting.
Okay, I think this is the time for me just to ask you a question here. A lot, a lot of this is brought about for courtroom security, not just courthouse, but it's come through the Supreme Court and all those protect the courtrooms. What would happen, and maybe, I'm thinking maybe it might be cheaper to acquire or build a building that is just courtrooms?
Not really. You're gonna run into, when you get into that, there's, you run into different corridors that you have to have. There's a public corridor, there's secure corridors when you're moving.
Which we can't do here.
Right. But if you're gonna do something like, if you were gonna look at building another building like that, I mean, it's good, you have to have a solid port when you're bringing the the people that are in custody in, they have to have a secure where they don't have any interaction with the public. Then there's holding cells and the judge's chambers have to have secure routes to, you get into a very complicated and very in-depth. There's public corridors, there's partially secured corridors, and then there's completely secured corridors.
I just wonder how long it's gonna be before they tell us, the state says, you gotta do that either in your courthouse or somewhere else. You gotta, these things are mandatory, the little things you're talking about. We can never get that done here in this building.
The only way we can come close to is the video port that they use once in a while.
And you could do those for certain hearings.
Yeah.
You cannot do that for all hearings.
The initial hearing, I think it's the only thing you can actually do it for.
In the bond, I believe. Is that right Ted? Their initial hearings and that can be video, but all the other ones have to be.
Right.
Yeah.
Unless, unless we go into another pandemic thing, and then I think then the Supreme Court can issue other mandates at that time, but the initial hearing is the only one that can be video.
Okay. Thank you, I understand.
But it would be, it'd be pretty expensive, sir. Because then you'd be looking at moving the prosecutor out there and.
Prosecutor would have to be there too.
Probably. You'd probably move the prosecutor out there.
How about the probation? Would it have to be there?
No.
Oh, but.
I don't think so. But it'd be smart to just consolidate it, anybody that's tied to the.
Court system.
The courts.
That's what they did here in nineteen sixteen, but then the rules and situations have changed.
Right. The world has changed.
The world has changed.
Since then.
Okay, that's why I think security courthouses should be top of the list.
Yeah.
Pretty much at top of the list. Most protect here, protecting the public here, protecting the employees, protecting the court system.
I do too, Lauren. I didn't used to.
Well, it's like you say.
Do what I want.
Oh, you just, you can't trust nobody.
That's what I've learned, yeah.
I mean, I'd rather be over-prepared and over-equipped and not to be under if something happened. Because it's hard to address that after the fact.
Oh, yeah. I went to CBS to get some medications after I got out of hospital and I found an individual laying on the ground. He was there for almost fifteen minutes. People were walking by him. I thought he was dead. I went up and, and he fell down and hit his face on the corner and he's laying in front of his truck. Nobody helped him. It made me so freaking mad. I wasn't feeling good, but I stayed there anyway and helped the man to get up and make sure he got, called his wife and everything, make sure he got home and I'm like, nobody helps nobody no more. It's, it's a sad world. I agree with Lauren. I think this needs to be, I don't know if we wanna do it two phases, but I don't know who you wanna cut out of the edit request too, I mean.
Well, we need to have more discussion, as we can and can't do. We will work with you.
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, do we have a meeting this week?
It was last week, sir.
I missed it last week?
Yes.
Okay.
I can bring you up today, honor, if you want to send by.
You gave me a reminder and in my mind, I.
Yes, sir.
I apologize.
This L and A Foundation.
That's Libya at Abby.
So you remember that these are twenty twenty four requests, and if you do a two-year, it'd be twenty twenty five.
Correct.
For the two-year for him. And the other thing is, do we wanna put this on the next agenda for you to decide? Because I'm gonna have to advertise if all these requests, if that's what you're wanting to do. I don't have to advertise them for you, but I would have to for the council.
I can guarantee I can be at the next meeting due to my vacation situation.
Okay.
Because I use it all from my, I know that. It took all my sick time, all my vacation.
Yeah. So.
Does it get any better for you by the second meeting of November?
I, I should have some others back, yeah. Because I'll have to be here at the second meeting because Lauren's gonna be.
I'm not gonna be here.
Lauren will be here.
You're probably want all three of you here, so we can wait till. Well. You can wait till the first of December.
The fourth?
The fourth.
Yeah. I mean, because they're not gonna go into effect, it's just that some people need to know by the end of the year.
Right.
Like the chamber.
The chamber went up way high. We didn't give it to them last year, did we? I thought we only did forty-five or fifty last year.
Ninety.
Ninety?
Yeah, ninety.
The year before was less. Not that I'm counting.
In your twenty-three, you should have one here that says, has the list on it. Because we have to give the council time to do those also.
Right.
You can make a special meeting. You don't have to do it on, just a regular meeting. Correct Ted?
Pardon me, I'm.
Can't you do a special meeting just to come in and do edit? Like maybe a week between the sixth and the twentieth and do the thirteenth is both of you.
I'm just.
This is our. December thirteenth.
November thirteenth. You okay?
So far.
What about you, Steve?
When are we talking about? Long just afterward.
That's fine.
I can be here about three thirty, quarter to four. I don't think it would take very long. About an hour or so. More than likely.
I mean, that's up to you guys. I was just throwing that out.
I'll make sure I'm here, so it's whenever you guys want to.
You good with that, Lauren?
Yeah.
Make a motion. I have the edit funds decisions on December thirteenth at four o'clock.
November or December?
I was saying November.
November, what'd I say? December, second November thirteenth.
At what time? Four?
Four. Will you be out of the building by then, Lauren?
I'll be here. I'll second that.
Okay, did I get a second on that, Lauren?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to make our edit decision on November thirteenth at four o'clock. Or we want four thirty?
Four o'clock over.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye. I said I'd just be walking up the stairs, but I'll be here.
There you go.
I don't like people who get here at the last minute. Okay.
So if someone calls in and they have an edit request, I can still put it on the sixth?
Sure.
Okay. Just checking.
Do we have anybody that we normally give to that hasn't requested?
Yeah, but they're not gonna.
They're not gonna?
No.
Okay.
Due to what happened last year, so what's enough to do. Excuse me, what do you guys?
I don't think there's anybody here to represent the highway department, is there?
No, that's on vacation this week.
Yeah, but he didn't tell me.
I think he texted me last week.
Oh, just one of your texts.
Clarification. So on these edit requests, so you are prioritizing giving the Carroll family, senior family services money over what they requested and funding festivals and items of that nature. You're prioritizing those over courthouse security?
No, we're just getting.
That's what it sounds like.
That we're just getting what they want, and I suggested they needed more because they do so much, but it's not gonna be the top of the list. Like Lauren said, courthouse security meeting is gonna be number one to me.
But you just told them that you can't fund the whole request.
With what we have listed now.
You're putting it, half of it off until two thousand twenty-five?
That was a discussion that was upset in stone.
Oh, I could see how what we did would sound.
Right, I agree, but it's just, it's just talk between us, I guess.
Well, yeah, it's a matter of total stumps. If we would cut out the, for example, the seniors, you know, the bus service completely, we still couldn't fund all of it. So we, we wanna do it, but we've gotta figure out how we're gonna get it paid for, that's all. You think we ought to cut several things and get that done, or?
I, I think you probably need to have a discussion with the council, find some other funds, I guess. This is, well, that's, you're between a rock and a hard place, I understand.
Been there before.
Oh, yeah. Hey, I wanted to ask you, while I've got you commenting, how much anxiety is there for you as an office holder here in the courthouse concerning the security we do or don't have right now? Is this, is this a present thing all the time in your mind of?
It is when we are very busy. It is during our peak collection, so during the latter, the last half of April, the first part of May, yes, I'm very, it's very present in my mind. It's one of my main concerns. The same goes last half of October and the first part of November. I would say during those times, probably, I don't know, it's at least seventy-five percent of the people who are in and out of here are coming into my office. And I don't wanna get into specifics, but there's a lot of cash that's comes in and out of our office.
But my far the vast amount of is, is.
Is during my peak, our peak collection is when I'm most concerned. There's other times there have been isolated incidents where there's been some anxiety on both sides of the counter for one reason or another.
Well, I, I'm just trying to get a feeling for how each office holder feels about their self-security and, and our security for their staff in here, the way it is now.
In this world, I mean, it's not gonna get any better. Today's world, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Ask another one. Ask Matt, ask Matt.
I did ask Beth this before. Yes.
Pardon me. I'm not sure if I'm able to speak right now or not. Yes, Jessica Clark with Lockmueller Group. Scott had asked me to attend this morning, but I don't, I don't know if the matter's on the agenda or not, so I didn't wanna.
He didn't give me anything?
He didn't get the, okay. So we just had, for our asset management plan, we helped Carroll County assess the road conditions and prepare that data, get it submitted to LTAP, so you're eligible for community crossing programs, and we had submitted that agreement in the amount of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred, which is similar to what it's been in previous years. And we're just looking to try to get that started for you guys because there is a deadline on when that needs to be submitted to LTAP. That was all, so.
What was your last name?
Jeff Clark. It's Jessica Clark, Lockmueller Group. But I wasn't sure if it was on here since it wasn't listed, so.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You have a question? Okay. There is a mandatory, I'm asking this question. Is there a mandatory reporting to LTAP? Do we have to do?
Yes, there are. So you're required to remain eligible for your local road and street funding and your V H funding to submit your asset management data for your infrastructure, so your roadways, the condition of your roadways by December first of every year. That also then allows you then to be eligible to participate in the community crossing funding program and also the federal aid program. And then the annual operations report is due annually in June. So there are kind of, there's two requirements, but this specifically was the asset management aspect of it where we rerate the roads on an annual basis, so every, every road gets rerated every two years to stay eligible for those programs.
Okay, I guess, I felt that all went to NDOT. I didn't know what to.
Yeah, the LTAP houses the data on behalf of NDOT and State Board of Accounts.
I knew we had to do that, but I was just surprised it said that.
It's submitted to Indiana LTAP. They review the information and certify that it's complete and accurate, and then it's deemed as being.
Normally that comes out of.
More than checked by.
Yeah. And you're, you're gonna help us get that all done on time?
Yes, we have been for quite a few years now. We do it on an annual basis, yes, sir.
Have, have you met to do office lady over there, Carol?
Carol, yes, yes. Yep, we are working together on last year's operational report.
Okay, and how soon do you need to know about your funding?
Just the sooner the better because it gives us the time to be able to make those assessments and get it all submitted in by that December first.
I'll make a phone call after the meeting and talk to Mr. Scott.
I know he was trying to get it on, I just, with, with him being gone, he may not have been able to get submitted in time.
Well, he texted us last minute on Friday. He said he's gonna be on vacation this week, so.
So he probably, he just probably escaped his mind, so. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry you.
That's okay.
Keith. Morning, young.
Good morning.
I'm here this week. First thing, the highway department has loaned me a pickup truck to be able to utilize it for trash and recycling and stuff like that, and I just wanted to clarify, make sure it's okay to go to the highway department to fuel up and as needed.
Yes, so you guys know, I, they took the old truck, the old sign truck out of service over there. It was just sitting. So I pulled them to get it ready, bring it over here for Keith to use, park it in our lot. And Scott said he can just bring it over there for service and fuel, because I doubt you a full tank of fuel in that thing for the whole year. That way he has a truck and not to use his personal vehicles and he's got access to get, and it's got a lift bed on the back of it, so if he has something that he needs to get. Little lift platform, yeah, lift gate. Then that will help him, so I, I made that decision. And I was gonna let you guys know at the last meeting, but since I was a little under the weather.
Okay.
So he has that truck and I, and I discussed it with Scott, and he can just take it over there and fuel it up. No big deal, and they'll do the service on it and everything, because it's still a county's truck, so.
Yeah, uh, did we get a new county sign truck?
Yeah, when they, when we bought that new white Ford worth aluminum bed.
Yeah.
They use it for multipurpose over there. Because I think Kent bought a new truck for the signs and.
Yes. The way I remember it's a pretty darn nice truck.
It's a monster.
Yeah.
So he has that now. And it's already parked over here.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to like put in minutes?
Oh, I'll make a motion that Keith can use the highway truck provided and refuel over at the highway garage.
And you make this here?
Yeah, you make this there.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second concerning the concerning the highway department's sign truck and using it here. All in favor of the proposed motion, please say aye.
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 Uh, second thing, part of the three phases of the elevator upgrade, we had to, which upgrade also the fire alarm system inside the courthouse. I want to let you know that they have been here all week last week and they're planning on doing live testing of the new system starting Wednesday, I hope. So I'm hoping by the end of this week they'd be completely done with live testing and everything else being set up. That included all the little white, call them horns, there in the building, new sensors and stuff like that. So Wednesday afternoon, hopefully, I can only imagine how loud that's gonna be. Is when I'm gonna start doing the live testing, make sure everything's up to par and all that stuff.
One of, okay, I'm looking at one of my behind here.
Yeah, it's strobe light and horn. Yeah, it's a strobe light and horn, so there's pull stations by every exit, like the staircases and stuff like that. So if anyone has a pull, it activates the strobe lights. They run off of each other. They're all wireless, so one goes off, they all go off. And strobe light with the horn, and I don't know what tone these one, these will give out, but.
Yeah. Probably like the old school one.
It's gonna be very, very loud for, because there's one by the elevator, every exit on the way out. Every pull station by every exit. So that way you can pay, pull, switch, go. But like I said, they should be doing the live test Wednesday afternoon on those, and hopefully by the end of the week, everything's up to par, and that'll get us compliant, uh, compliant and fired.
But it's not emergency light?
We already have that established. There's emergency lighting in the hallway, in the staircases.
Yeah.
That's already.
So you don't have to have it in here?
No. Yeah, and I've been trying to get the most current update codes for fire regulations inside a government building. It's a lot of reading, because a lot of different codes, a lot of different angles and stuff like that. As it was a year and a half ago, the state inspector I saw was talking about the extinguishers and telling me that they can be removed from the offices because they want people to escape. What my thing was to him was if you have to use the extinguisher to get out, I mean, and it's not there, so that's really my head. Not been removed and nothing's been ever really enforced on that. Because they can stay or go, and he just said that, like with the schools, they want kids and teachers to get out of the building, not trying to be a hero. So, but, so that should be Wednesday afternoon on the live test.
Are those wireless?
Yeah.
Do you maintain those batteries in them, or?
Um, yeah, we'll have to maintain them. And the whole system is wireless. It's the only wireless system out there, as I was told in my research, that like Honeywell even offers. Because to run a wired system, which I think in some aspect would be more preferred, but in this building, running a wired system is very, very difficult. Very, very difficult, but.
You'd have to run it through the conduit down to it, wouldn't you?
Oh, the amount of holes and stuff you'd have to drill and everything else like that, yeah. So it's all a wireless system, so. For the elevator update, I just hand Beth and you guys a photo, kind of described, so it's the jackhead that they're having issues, well, not issues, but it's taking the most time to get in. If this elevator was a newer style elevator and and the jack would have blown out on the bottom, it'd probably been a little bit de-simpler, but since it's an older elevator, the jackhead is what they're waiting for, for the final, everything else has been fabricated. And from what I was told by the general manager, their expected start date is October, the end of October on this. They're open sooner, but they're anticipating jackhead being in and they can start on the elevator and install by the end of this month.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Have they dug the extra trench though?
No, they haven't, they haven't done any of the work yet. The equipment that they have utilized to repair or replace the complete system, they only have two sets of equipment to do that, so they can only do, you know, two different facilities at once they have. So when they bring the system in, I think it's like an all-in-one, like turn one knob and like starts excavating and digging all that, then pulling it out and cutting the shaft and so that way they get the old one out. It sits down inside the actual shaft of the elevator, which I know you said you wanted to see when they, when they showed us. Yeah, I'm kinda interested too.
Take some pictures.
Oh, yeah.
How wide is that shaft?
I don't, I don't honestly know.
Find out.
Yeah, I haven't really measured it.
It's gotta be a good sixty-eight inches.
I know that there's not much more room, extra room in there compared to what the elevators, I mean, if you're on the first floor looking at the elevator door, you see like the space out inside it, like that space is not actually what's inside the elevator. It, there is very, very tight in there, very tight, compared where the cap's at. You can go deeper or wider. So, but that's what we're at right now.
Deeper for this, right?
What's that?
They have to go deeper for this.
No, well, what they'll do is just that the, the main piston that's in there, and from what I was told from them, is that as far up as it has to extract to push the elevator to the top floor is how deep it is in the bottom, so that should already be established. So what they have to do is just go in there and clean out, once they pull it out, clean it out, put a new cylinder down in there, make sure that everything's good, and then they'll put the shaft down inside of it, or the new piston down inside it and go from there, so the only thing they're, they're gonna have to remove is any of the debris and stuff like that that has to come out of it. So like the old cylinders, stuff like that to get it out of there.
Maybe they put gold down there.
Well, there, there could be something down there, gold that thing is. But, but their expected date to start is the end of this. If there's any sooner or any issues with that, I will update you doing again.
So the other parts are in?
Yes.
We're just waiting for that piece to hold the cylinder or. There's probably a special manufacturer.
Seven?
Did you ask them why they're not here, here?
I just, yeah, I just, it'd be nice if someone was just walking around.
They've got them all, sorry.
Yeah. Thank you, don't worry.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you. Beth, we're down to you.
Okay. In your market bill, you have the dispersment of funds, the requisitions of fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen? In your market bill, you have the disbursement of funds, the requisitions of fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Bill, can I have a minute?
Yeah. These are the new jail project.
Disbursement of funds.
There should be three of them.
I got three of them. I have three of them. Okay.
First one is Barnes and Thorburn for thirteen thousand one nineteen ninety-six.
Thirteen.
Do you have another fourteen at the top?
It does.
And the second one would be.
That is what we've done every month that.
Yeah. So you just need a motion and we sign it.
Uh huh.
You want to do them all together?
Yeah.
That's fine.
All right, I'll make a motion for requisition fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Barnes and Thorburn thirteen thousand one nineteen ninety-six. Fifteen's one million eight hundred thirteen, six hundred nineteen thirty-four. And number sixteen is Elvatus for eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. Motion to approve all three.
I'll second. Okay. So you're going to motion and a second to do all three of requisitions fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. I don't know what the total is, but it's a bunch of money. And I'd call for a vote. All in favor of, of this disbursement of funds from, from the project fund, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, I'll go sign here. Do we all sign them? Yep.
Is this incremental funding? Is that what these numbers are?
What, like what? I'm sorry.
Are we incrementally paying the same amount each time to pay for the jail?
A couple of them are, yes.
What's the detail on the VW? One point eight million.
I don't have a copy, so I don't.
That isn't very place?
They have.
What's the question, Beth?
She wants to know about VWs.
Probably paying all the contractors. The concrete work I drove around it last night.
Barnes and Thorburn here. Yeah, I'm out there about every, not every day, but every other day, something like that.
This is application six. And this is four.